They they told us they got triples, so four hundred, they're gonna add eight hundred more.
Eight hundred plus another five hundred, we're doing pretty good. We need houses. So we need housing.
Yeah, all the people.
It's looking good.
They don't need cars, too.
Yeah, if I can help them, we'll see. Welcome, everyone. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a Lord's Prayer. Our Father, in heaven.
I will be thy name. Thy kingdom come, will be done.
On earth as it is in heaven.
Give us your daily bread. You forgive us for trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but ever is from evil. Amen. Okay, thank you. We are running just short. We had a investment advisory council meeting. Apologize for the late start.
Well, Commissioner, before we start the meeting, we just had some big news break that we want to start a meeting out today. It's gonna be one of the greatest meetings in Trumbull County history. I think we have two big announcements today. First of all, Foxconn has made the announcement with a new partner and a new product they're gonna be making there. From what we've been told and from what the news is breaking now, there's hundreds, potentially up to eight hundred more jobs coming to our county. And at the same time, Howland this morning passed their portion of the JED for Kimberly-Clark, which finalizes the last step of the progress they needed for there. So we're looking at two massive companies, two Fortune two hundred and five hundred companies. Well, the third largest employer in the world, Foxconn, Kimberly-Clark, a Fortune two hundred company, both of them having big announcements here in Trumbull County today. And together, they're gonna, they're gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of fourteen hundred, twelve to fourteen hundred jobs coming available and over the next year in this county. And these aren't petty jobs. These are good paying jobs. I know they said Kimberly-Clark, their average wage is over thirty bucks an hour. And Foxconn, I think, is starting people somewhere as close to that, too. So it's a good day for Trumbull County to start this meeting. So we have this and a budget meeting. But hopefully, we can keep everything positive. But that's fantastic news for the Valley here today that we can all relish in, that many people in our community had a part in. And congratulations and thank you to Howland Township for the finishing up their piece of the JED. And thank you to Lordstown officials for working with Foxconn so that they can make this big announcement today.
Thank you, Commissioner. But I also like to recognize while we're on this comment about, you know, our planning commission. We would want, also like to thank the Port Authority, Lake de River, Jobs, Ohio, Eastgate Regional Council of Governments, and
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, yes. All those that were involved in this. It it's actually a great day to be a Commissioner.
It's making our job easy today.
It'll even be better, Commissioner Bernard, when we're able to cut those ribbons.
Well, I haven't seen the report, so I'm not sure what it means for Trumbull County, but hopefully it's gonna mean something. We met with Foxconn a couple of months ago and we're awaiting word. So it's, I want to see it in print and hopefully it's gonna mean a lot of jobs for Trumbull County. So if it indeed happens, congratulations and thank you. And we already knew about Kimberly-Clark. They did a fantastic job. So, yeah, if it all happens, it's a good day and it's gonna mean housing, it's gonna mean employment, it's gonna mean a lot. And it's gonna help a lot of the small businesses in Trumbull County that that are the backbone of of any county that. So let's wait and see what happens and see the numbers and just see what they have to say. Hopefully, hopefully they'll contact us.
And keep in mind also that we we hope to have another great announcement with Insight Hospitals. We do have a meeting with them. They had met with the Nurses Union. We don't have any information from that, but we do we do meet with them next week. And we are very cautiously optimistic that those hospitals will be open. So I look for some some good news here in the near future.
One other thing also is Amazon in Bezetta Township. You know, they're building a huge warehouse out there and I'm not sure how many they're gonna employ, but that's another another great economic growth for the county. So.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let's just keep it going.
Okay, so Commissioner Malloy, you opened up the floodgates for us to be able to talk before. Now, our next public workshop will be held here on Tuesday, August fifth at ten thirty AM. And then we will have a special public meeting with Insight Hospitals. That will be Tuesday, August fifth at one o'clock PM. That is a public meeting. Just to reiterate, the public is invited and the commissioners will stay afterwards to answer questions from the public. But this will be more of a elected official roundtable with a lot of representation from various departments of, you know, state departments and even Bernie Moreno's department and all elected officials here. And our next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, August sixth at ten thirty AM here in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, roll please.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes, here.
Mr. Hernandez. Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated July twenty second, twenty twenty five, and the regular meeting dated July twenty third, twenty twenty five, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number six is to adopt a resolution designating the financial institutions listed as public depositories for the next succeeding four-year period commencing August thirty first, twenty twenty five, and ending August thirtieth, twenty twenty nine. Whereas pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Commissioners on June fourth, twenty twenty five, a date and time was set for the purpose of designating its public depositories of active monies for the next succeeding four-year period commencing August thirty first, twenty twenty five, and ending August thirtieth, twenty twenty nine, which is this date of July thirtieth, twenty twenty five, at ten thirty AM, and notice was given as required by law to all eligible institutions that might desire to be designated as such public depositories of the meeting date for the designation of public depositories and the amount of two hundred and ten million dollars as to the estimate to be available for deposit. And then each eligible institution, in accordance with Section one three five point three two of Ohio Revised Code, was requested to make application in writing to the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners. Notices were mailed to all eligible institutions on June ninth, twenty twenty five, and a legal notice was published on the county's website beginning June eleventh, twenty twenty five, and published in area newspapers on June eleventh, twenty twenty five, and June eighteenth, twenty twenty five. And commissioners, if you turn to the next page, under Section one, and I'll list the financial institutions, Huntington National Bank, Burst National Bank, Farmers National Bank, Key Bank National Association, and PNC Bank National Association.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number seven is to appoint Mr. James Marlowe to the Trumbull County Senior Services Advisory Council for the term of July thirtieth, twenty twenty five, through December thirty first, twenty twenty seven. And Mr. Marlowe is being appointed to fulfill the vacant term held by Lynn Welch, who was appointed by the Board of Commissioners on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, for a three-year term, and who then submitted a resignation on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eight is to approve payment to Hudson Communications for the purchase and installation of the Marx slash VHF and amateur radio package for the Trumbull County EMA Mobile Command Post in the amount of twenty nine thousand eight hundred thirty four dollars seventy seven cents. Purchase of the package will include all installation kits, encryption software, programming, speakers, vehicle repeaters, antenna, hardware, and supplies.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadways. Bellwick Road, County Highway eleven in Hubbard Township, closing date Tuesday, July twenty second, eight AM through Thursday, July twenty fourth, five PM, and Braceville Robinson Road in Braceville Township, closing date Saturday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty five, from nine AM to twelve noon, and that is for the Braceville Community Foundation 5K Fun Run and Walk Race.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number ten is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit requested by the company listed, Ken Cherullo Trucking LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to accept maintenance bond number zero nine four three seven two four two submitted by Carrilla Contractors, Inc., for the Yankee Lakes Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, number five dash S dash eighteen in Brookfield Township. The maintenance bond is issued by Fidelity and Deposit Company of Maryland and is for a period of two years from June twenty third, twenty twenty five, to June twenty third, twenty twenty seven, in the amount of five hundred twenty three thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars and forty cents.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to authorize Richard Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute change order number one for the contract with MJD Excavating, Inc., for the countywide Phase One Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program along State Road in Champion Township. Change order number one is an eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollar reduction in the contract amount revising the contract value to one hundred fifty one thousand six hundred sixty two dollars and fifty cents. And this is due to one of the connections planned for Phase One was nonperformed due to a transfer of property.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item thirteen is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Autumn Madrid to the full-time position of dispatcher in the Trumbull County nine one one department effective August fourth, twenty twenty five. Ms. Madrid will be paid twenty three fifty per hour.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Item fourteen is to authorize the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to join in the Purdue-Sackler settlement relative to the pending opioid litigation to authorize the boards outside opioid legal counsel appointed by the Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas on December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen to vote on its behalf in the Purdue-Sackler bankruptcy proceedings and to authorize Richard Hernandez, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute any and all required documents.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Mr. Bernard.
Discussion first.
Yeah, I do have discussion. So we did meet in executive session yesterday, the commissioners, and we have approved the settlement for the opioid along with Lake County. This had been ongoing for some time. The negotiation that our attorney had negotiated, instead of six payments, we would receive two payments. The first payment, total settlement between Lake County and Trumbull County is an amount of five million dollars. The first payment would be made approximately in October of twenty twenty five in the amount of two point five million, which we would share with Lake at one point two five oh. And then the second payment would be made in the first quarter. So the commissioners believe that at this point, instead of spreading this out over that long period of time, this will generate monies in advance of, you know, the six payments into two. So commissioners are all in agreement that this this was something that that we we should agree on along with Lake and not prolong the process. So that is, that is actually how this all came down. And I, yes, I vote yes for the settlement.
I'll take the role, Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item fifteen is to appoint Attorney Robert Berkey pursuant to RC three zero nine point zero nine C and RC three zero five point one four B as counsel for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners to provide legal research, advice, and consulting, including all related litigation relative to the filing of a petition for annexation of Guermar Properties, Inc., Weathersfield Township at the rate of two hundred dollars per hour.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bernard.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Yes. Okay. Short agenda. We're gonna move the public comment. If anybody here that has a comment, if you'd like to approach the podium, give us your name. Yes, Gary.
Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Commissioners, just a reminder, we have a public hearing tonight. It's on the Anderson Morris Waterline Project. It's a rather short extension project. We had a public hearing for the Steel Wagon project, which is adjacent to it approximately eleven months ago. And we had residents on Anderson Morris come forward and request that they be included in the project. The Board of Commissioners, you went ahead and allocated additional ARP funds so we can include them in the project. So tonight, we have a public hearing to see if they truly are in support of it. So. All right, just a reminder, tonight, seven o'clock, McKinley Heights Fire Station.
What's the total cost of the project?
Uh, for this portion of it, I don't have it in front of me. I want to say about three hundred fifty thousand.
Okay, Gary, thank you. We'll see you tonight. Okay, any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you can hear me or not. My name is Jennifer Bernstein, and I am a resident of North Bloomfield. And I am just here today to find out what the county is intending to do about our dog crisis. It's bad, really bad, abused and abandoned dogs. And I know funding is like a problem. But what what can we do? I feel like we can do better. The stuff you see on television is just heartbreaking to me. So what can we do?
Yeah, well, and Mrs. Bern, Ms. Bernstein. The commissioners have been working on this, going around and around with, you know, the dog pound. We do have a structure. We do have architectural drawings. We are shovel ready. It's just a matter of garnering, you know, the monies that are necessary to put this thing together. So that would either require, you know, loans, or that would require grants or, you know, monies that we could, you know, take out of our coffers, which are very, well, we have a budget meeting, as a matter of fact, today with our departments who, you know, they are struggling as well. So we all are. But I could, I mean, this is something that that I would definitely before, well, it's gonna happen pretty soon before I'm not a commissioner. Or before my term ends, I could tell you that I'm one hundred percent on board for this new dog pound. Just a matter of getting together and the commissioners, us finding a way to supplement the, you know, to build it. But we did do a study. It's, I think we spent over almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars in architectural fees. We do thank Jason from Healthy Hearts for doing everything he's been trying to do. But we do absolutely need a new facility for the Trumbull County Dog Pound. I'm only one of three commissioners, but I have feel your pain. Yes, we we absolutely have to do something. So we're working on nine one one, we're working on the corner, and we're working on the dog pound. Those are three areas that really need capital improvement.
Appreciate it. Anything you guys can do for these animals is
and I have
have a voice.
And I have, yeah, yeah, well, you do have a voice. You're you're a resident.
So I had to come to speak for the animals.
Well, I just, I just want to also let you know that we've instructed our our new grants writing consultant to start looking at funds for us to help us offset the cost for a new dog pound. So it takes time and it takes money. And, you know, we're trying to do the best we can and trying to get some state and federal dollars in here to help us out. But it it's not on the back burner, it's on a burner. But you know, we need to secure the funds for all three projects before we move forward. But it's it's definitely something that should have been done many, many years ago. And, you know, we're committed and trying to solve the problem. We just need to find and secure the funds.
Commissioners, I was up this this past weekend. At a vacation weekend, I went up to the Port Clinton Sandusky area, the islands, and I realized up there they have, in all the grocery stores, they all have boxes outside of them where you can donate dog food or cat food. If you shop, you come outside, you put just like a St. Vincent de Paul box or like the clothing boxes, and you go right out there and put it right in there. And the Humane Society of, I think it was Ottawa County, did their cycle and pick things up weekly. So I would like to explore the possibilities of partnering up with somebody to maybe with some of our local grocery stores, because I know there's a need for supplies and there's a need for space. I mean, we can't do anything about the space right now, but we can do things about supplies. We've we've donated more money even out of ARPA funds to nonprofit, and we have our dog pound fully staffed with, you know, the round the clock, if they need hours, we haven't denied anything, our dog pound financially. But I do know they need supplies and food, and that's something maybe we can look into with that type of program. And then, like I said at the last meeting, we need people out there to adopt these animals. We can't care for these animals for life. There are people like you, they'll come in and play with them, feed them, but that's not a home for these animals. That's just, you know, we need to get these animals out of incarceration and into a loving home, and that's gonna free up the space for the next one that needs help. So if people out there need to really consider when they're gonna get an animal, don't drive to Holmes County to go buy the latest little doodle out there, and don't order dog online or whatever. You know, find a rescue pet and and love it. Bring it home, love it, and that's gonna help more than anything right now, is the community getting involved so that we're not just, like I said, incarcerating dogs and having wardens take care of them all day long. We need loving homes for these animals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernstein. Yes, sir.
Pleasure, and I live in Champion Township. I know with all the heavy rains and everything else, you guys had numerous problems with water backup and everything else. My concern is on our street over on Aspen, okay? And I know I've gone to the Trumbull County Engineers, I was able to talk with Gary. And what what happens is there are two large pipes when they put in the development. One is fifty three inches, the other one is thirty six. This is two two houses up. And it just dumps out into a ditch that is behind my property. My property is eighty by two forty. Okay, and that ditch is in the property that you used to be able to walk over it. And I would cut grass on the other side. There was a chain link fence. Well, they put in condos down at the end of the street, and the other water was open down there. And then when they put the condos in, they ended up enclosing with a pipe, thirty six inch to twenty four inch pipe. And they put it at right angles, okay? So naturally, when you have all this heavy rain coming down, it hits to there, and all of a sudden, it backs way up to our street. I've lost probably fifteen to eighteen feet of my property. I can't even, you know, my property ends here. There's a great big ditch now, and then go on the other side, and I can't even get to. Numerous trustee meetings, and this, I've been there for thirty seven years. When they put in the condo, it was said that, yep, we know it's undersized pipe. And if we have any problems up the road, we'll remove it and put in the right size. And a survey that I I got said it should be fifty three inch pipe down at that end. So when you have a heavy rain, mathematically, it's not able to take care of it. Now, the water goes up underneath Mahoning Avenue. There is a seventy two inch pipe for that. But to get from where that enclosed pipe is to that pipe, it's not happening. It's backing up the condo. The whole yard is backed up with water. I noticed last time we had the trustees, the road department, and the water was above ditch into the yard and everything else along that line. I don't know what can go on or, you know, we were looking at, my neighbor and I, we want to enclose that. If you have to put in fifty three inch pipe, the price of that's something like ten thousand dollars. But, you know, I keep on eroding, 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 and that ditch is getting bigger. There, if you look towards the east of my property, there is a storage barn that's in the back, and he's probably about this far away from that eroding completely. So I don't know whether you guys can take a look at it to help us out. I know it's on private property.
Right.
That's and this is our highway engineer, Gary. Do you have any thoughts on this? Anything we can do to help this gentleman in that neighborhood?
Gary Schaefer, Engineer's Office. Yeah, I did take a look at that with him, pulled the plans and that. I haven't been out in the field. It's in the backyard, it's private drainage. I believe there is an easement on that. It's been about a month, so my recollection is a little off, but so pipe goes into a ditch. Anytime you pipe it in, and that's what he was searching and doing and looking at, you're gonna restrict that ditch. The ditch has more capacity than piping it in. You're going to restrict that ditch. The ditch has more capacity than piping it in. And then the pipe at Mahoning Avenue, seventy two inch, I don't think it floods over Mahoning, and they don't have any plans on replacing it. Yeah, it's in pretty good condition. I did talk to O D N R, got that information. Don't know exactly what's causing the flooding. I know the erosion, obviously, coming from those two pipes, coming out of a pipe into a ditch. You're going to get some scowry, you're going to get some erosion. But there's really nothing we can do. We can't go on private property, can't advise. Don't know if soil and water could, but you're going to need, you know, an engineering firm to come out and assess this.
Soil and water there? Did you contact soil and water? And they came out and looked at? Yeah, that that usually is a, you know, prerequisite of doing anything, but I think the issue is, Mister Laser, is that. On private property, we we don't. We we don't enter private property now. That does, you know, the the Trumbull County engineer. The, who put the pipe in there? The condo?
It's all done with the development. Yeah, this was, what, thirty years ago?
Oh, thirty years ago.
A while ago. I mean, the plans were quite old, but pretty clear on what was put out there, and then it crosses over Aspen and then empties and opens up. I mean, along the backyard lines there.
Homeowners, we went down, and they want to have a backyard behind that condo, and it was just. All of a sudden, the extent. Boy, it's years and years. You just see like you have a lake or a pond in the backyard. Water is, I put a barn up in the back. It went before that. And unfortunately, now I have like harbor bodies across the back, sixteen of them that I use. Lower and cut. I had there was a chamber. Ides are to the point that they're ready. Where it comes from, I know.
Well, that's a stream. I mean, once upon a time, that was a stream that got piped in, so the developer could make money selling the lots, redirected a lot of that flow. And anytime you're going from open channel flow into pipe and open channel into pipe, you're going to have flooding issues, and you're going to get the erosion.
Do they, do they have a retention pond behind the condos or anything?
No.
No.
No. Yeah. Gary, I have a question. Does someone have to give permission when they put a pipe in in that stream? And if so.
Piped it in, and that's something I sat down in my office with and discussed with him. It's going to take an Army Corps permit, and he might not even be able to get it.
No, I mean, the original pipe that was put in by the contractor, did he, did he have to have a permit to do that?
Oh, that was all done. Yeah, the condos would have been private, wouldn't have been reviewed by our our office, but Aspen Drive would have been back in the day, but we're going back thirty years.
Yeah, and at that time, you felt the pipe was large enough.
I think it was sized correctly, yeah.
But no, but.
And I know.
Condos and other things.
Well, yeah, other flows, maybe things are redirected upstream. I mean, this is going to take an engineering firm looking at this thing, seeing how much flow, what the drainage area is. And size that correctly. And again, Army Corps might not provide them with a permit to fill that channel in.
So you're talking, what, on the east side of the road, correct?
He's on the west side.
The the west side?
West side of Mahoning, he's on.
Yeah, the west side of Mahoning, but east side of Aspen.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, yeah, that's been a drainage problem there for years. Yeah, it didn't just happen. It's it's been, it's been down there.
Even though you have any rains, like that water comes back, I even have video. Ways and everything else, it just washes everything. Fortunately, we lost. That water rushes through there.
Yeah, that's it.
Easement.
Yeah.
Seeing that or to get back to the other pipes, I don't know.
Yeah, that easement is a private easement. It's it's not an easement for Champion Township, or, you know, it's not dedicated and accepted by the county. So it's just to keep you from building in it and dedicate that easement for drainage purposes.
Boy, I wish we had an answer for you, Mister Laser. I don't, I like Mister Schaefer said, I he, I don't know about an O D N R permit, whether they would even allow any. Anything to, you know.
Get Army Corps permits.
Army Corps.
Yeah, all of our our culverts and that, and a lot of times we got to jump through hoops just depending on the sensitivity of that that area, the stream or that crossing. I don't know if you can get enough cover to get a big enough pipe in there to be able to handle the hydraulic capacity of that channel. So, I mean, that's something an engineering firm would have to look at.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I I understand that, yeah. I I don't think there's any easy answer to it. I mean, I, you know, I I don't think that there's anything really the county can do. Engineer can't do anything. I think you're probably maybe best suited to try to find an engineering firm that would. At least give you an idea of what maybe you're looking at and then move from there. You know, if it's going to take, you know, somebody that knows what they're looking at or. Well, we appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I mean, I, you know, I I don't think that commissioners, I don't, you know, I I don't have a solution. Right? Right? Yeah. Oh, yeah, I I don't even know. There's liability to that. I don't know, you know, yeah. Well, thank you.
That, and you know, I just don't know of something.
Yeah. Thank you, Gary, for working with them. Thank you, Mister Laser. We're still in public comment. Any additional comments? How's Michelle doing? Give her blessings, let her know we're thinking about her.
We, I guess we we should too. We have Arno Hill here, former mayor of Lordstown. You could take some glory in what's happening over in your village here today. You. Bave the way for a lot of this to happen. So thank you for being here and.
Would you, would you like to make any comments, Mister former mayor? You're not at the lake today, I see. I imagine you are. Okay. Oh, boy, I don't know if.
Okay, this is a quick one.
Well, before we, before we go to Denny, I I just have one comment. Guys, I would ask that the board consider, I think we need a, at some point in time, we need a meeting with. The supervisors and the department heads under the commissioners. I I think we need to sit down with them. I. I know I have some things I'd like to discuss with them. So, you know, I would ask that you, the other two members, check your schedules and. Maybe after either a workshop or a regular meeting, we could have them come down and let's just have a general discussion with them.
Absolutely.
No problem with that.
We had not long ago, actually.
We'll include Alex in on it too.
Okay, now, before Commissioner Malloy starts, do remind that we do have a budget meeting here at one P M. And it is, well.
Yeah, we got a little bit of time. And I were also asked too, we did get the contract back from the Health Department. And I I know I talked to our prosecutor, he's reviewing that and doing some work to see if we can accept that or if we. With the legality of it, of leasing from the Board of Health. So we'll be working on that over the next couple of days. Okay, we'll wrap it up with snakes. A lot of people's favorite topic. A lot of people this time of year, well, they're swimming, they're in the creeks, they're in the lakes. And the first thing you get the phone call that they got, they saw water moccasin in their pond. Just because of snakes in water does not make it a water moccasin. We do not have any water moccasins, cottonmouths in Ohio. The ones you're seeing around the water are northern water snakes. They're very aggressive. They will bite you. But they are non poisonous. The only poisonous snake we do have in Trumbull County are Massassaga rattlesnakes. We're one of only three places in Ohio that have them, and only one of a handful of places in the United States that have them. Massassaga is also called a swamp rattlesnake. They're only about eighteen to twenty inches long. We have a mosquito, the biggest population of them is right on the corner of Mahan Denman Road and Bizetta Road. Up in the Refuge area. We also have a pocket in Southington that's been discovered recently. And there they have a rattle. It's a little snake. They're fierce. They bite you. They are poisonous. But they also are endangered. So O D N R comes out, and they trap as many of them as they can every year. Now, they put out tin sheets of metal, and then they go and check the metal to find the snakes that wanted to get warm. They catch them, and they put radio tracking devices inside of them. It's called a pit device. And that way, if someone catches that snake, takes it home and tries to sell it, because there is a marked black market for endangered species. In every pet show, game warden will scan snakes, and if it comes up positive with a hit, they know that snake was obtained from the wild, and that person can be arrested. So there, most of our, most of the adult massassagas in this county have already been caught and. Have the pit and injected into them through a syringe. You get four or five of them a year dead on the road. People will call and say, hey, if I want a rattlesnake, the game want to go out and pick them up, and, you know, they usually get them off to universities or educational institutions. They don't let the public keep an endangered species. We also don't have any copperheads up here. That's another poisonous snake that they do have. In in the very far reaches of southern Ohio, you might find a few. And same thing with timber rattlesnakes. They're in Pennsylvania. If you head up to Tynnesto, those places, there's timber rattlesnakes all over the place. We don't have them here, but that's not saying we can't. They can come in on a logging truck, they can come in on a dump truck or dirt truck. So there are instances where anything could happen. I mean, there are people found pythons in their backyard and alligators and stuff here in Trumbull County over the years. But those are ones that, you know, somebody get brought here intentionally and released or or mistake. But for the most part, what you're going to find here are milk snakes, black rat snakes, garter snakes, and the northern water snakes. You might get lucky and find some racers or. Different odd fox snakes, things like that. But the odds are they're not poisonous. So don't freak out that there's a water moccasin in your pond, but like I said, they are aggressive. You know, they they will get you. If you have any questions, you know, the easiest thing to do is take a picture of it, and then you can send it in to O D N R, and they can pretty much identify it pretty quickly. If you have one, and I've had many instances over the years in my previous profession. Where you get a call from the hospital, and somebody was there, they got bit by a snake, and they had the snake in a bucket, and the doctors didn't even know if it was poisonous or not. So. They had to get a wildlife professional to identify it. Most of the time, it was a northern water snake that got them, not a cottonmouth, and. They were harmless. So snakes are good. They keep the bugs, the rats, the mice down. Old houses, pretty much every old house, if your house was built before nineteen hundred, you probably have rat snakes living in the house somewhere in the, under the siding. I know that when I moved out of my house in Kinsman, there was a flood, and we had to gut the kitchen. And behind the kitchen had about four feet of dog food in the walls from the squirrels and chipmunks and mice that would. Over the years raid whoever's dog was there stacking in there. While with that, that means you had mice and rats living in the walls. I I probably found thirty snake skins. One of them was almost seven feet long. But they were rat snakes that were living in the walls, eating the mice that were eating the dog food that were in the old house. So old houses have that. A lot of times between the old houses, they stuffed it for insulation with straw and hay and things like that. So old farmhouses and barns, you'll get rat snakes, they're harmless. But they will scare the heck out of you if, you know, you find that big skin and you wonder. Where's where's the rest of the animal when you find the skin in your basement? And I'm sure if anyone that's listening that has an old farmhouse in the Trumbull County, they know that's part of country living. But that's my report for today.
That was.
Venomous snakes.
Commissioner Malloy's Massassuga rattlesnake.
Massassaga rattlesnakes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Without further ado, we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mister Bernard.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Mister Hernandez.
Yes, thank you, everyone.